Okay, we're gonna start the meeting. Welcome, everybody. Danielle.
I have a microphone and your mic and hearing. The meeting tonight is for the conduct of town visits by the town board. Public is invited to participate in the items marked on the agenda of public comments. During that segment of the meeting, if you have a question or comment for the supervisor, please raise your hand and make me acknowledge. State your full name and let your remarks through minutes. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation.
Thank you. And tonight's meeting also is a public hearing for local law of the year 2023, amending the zoning map for the town of Marlborough. Certain real properties located off of Dock Road in the town of Marlborough to establish a uniform zoning into the R District. If everybody doesn't know about this, this is the property behind our wastewater treatment plant in Marlborough. And the property developer Scott Leighton has purchased to develop 100 townhomes. So we're gonna keep the public hearing open. I will take any questions. But I'm gonna skip and we're gonna go to the pledge of the flag and then we're gonna move ahead to a public hearing. Because we have a couple special presentations tonight. If, I'm sure that's why most of you are here tonight. And it's kinda strange but good. I have two meetings in a row. I'll get to honor two 100-year-old individuals in our town of Marlborough. And tonight, we're gonna honor Bob Donaldson, 100-years-old. Bill? And then we got a state champion in the ranks here. We got... And it's hot as heck in here tonight. Julian Juris, thank you for coming tonight. And she's the state champ for the Marlborough for discus. And she just won that and we're gonna rep- we're gonna give her award tonight. So thank you. So, yeah. So let's rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing to honor all those men and women who sacrificed their lives to give us all this opportunity to serve our country, our state, and of course, our small town of Marlborough. I thank you.
And Bill, I apologize because I'm gonna have to call out my secretary tonight. Because I'm reading off her agenda and she put Bob. So we're gonna have to redo your commendation award, but just so you know, we have your award. And Tina, you're in trouble. So, um, I don't know why I didn't catch that myself, Bill, but... Um, so anyway, I'm gonna ask the board to amend the agenda. And I'm gonna move on item number seven, presentations, up to item number two. So we could honor our two award recipients.
I'll make the motion to move item number seven up above item number two to complete our presentations.
My secretary. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. So I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I make the motion to approve the agenda as it is.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're into presentations right away. And the first one we're gonna do is Juliana. We're gonna do hers first. Ulster County legislator Corcoran is gonna say some words. He has some plaques and then I'll say a few words and then I have a plaque and then you come up and we'll take some great pictures and let's start the awards. Go ahead, Tom. Thanks.
Well, first I want to say is you probably said Bob because they were thinking Bob Tronzalito, but that's next year his 100th, so we'll do that. I'll take care of that next time around. But tonight, yeah, we're honoring two individuals. In sports, I coached up at the high school. I've been up there 26 years. Nobody works harder than Juliana. As we're walking out for baseball games, she's already there with Coach Fassel. When we're walk- walking off, she's still there working mostly by herself. But in sports, great moments are born from great opportunities. Juliana was handed an opportunity to compete at Marlborough High School with the track team and throw to discus. And she took that opportunity and achieved the state championship. In order to achieve what she did, she had to create an environment where she felt she could obtain a level of success. She worked hard every day individually and with Coach Fassel. She believed in herself and others believed in her. And she believed that she could compete with the very best, not only in Section 9, but in the state. In April this year, at the New York State Relay, she threw 129.11 and was good enough to win, but she also broke the high school record at that time. Then in June, when she won the Division II Disc States Championship at the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, she threw 132.10, again breaking the record that she had already set for herself. She then came back the next day to compete for the combined state championship, finishing third overall and threw 134.9, again breaking the discus record. And today, she holds the discus record at Marlborough High School at 137.7. So constantly bettering herself, constantly the professional, constantly pushing herself to be better and better. And what we ask of our athletes at Marlborough High School after all these years of coaching. So it was with my honor to present the pride of Ulster County to Juliana Juris in recognition of your outstanding achievements and New York State Discus Championship today, the 13th day of June 2023.
So I'm gonna just follow up on Tom's remarks because, like I told you, I tried to dabble in throwing the discus when I was in high school. I, I couldn't get past 100, so 137 is like unbelievable, so congratulations. And I did compete on a baseball team that went to second in the states. So just to be number one in the states and to do it on your own is such an achievement that's unbelievable. In baseball and other sports, it's a team sport, but in this sport, it's an individual sport. So we at the town of Marlborough wanna give you this Pride of Marlborough commendations for everything you've done for yourself, for your family, and for our community representing us up at the states. And congratulations for your accomplishments. Thanks.
Okay, on to Bob Ch- I mean, Bill Donaldson.
Come on now. Tina's never gonna live this down, I'm telling you.
Bill, it's an honor to have you here. Thank you, everyone, for showing up tonight. I just wanna mention a few things. Again, this is my third or fourth 100th and it's fantastic. I love doing them. I'd love to do them every week. But let me just start out by saying, on March 3rd of 1923, New York, The Time Magazine issued its first issue, and that's March 3rd of 1923. April 4th of 1923, Warner Brothers was established. Wasn't even around yet. April 4th of 1923. April 18th, 1923, the first game played at Yankee Stadium. Yankee versus the Boston Red Sox. Unfortunately, Yankees won. So June 10th, 1923, was a Sunday. And on that Sunday, Bill Donaldson was born. And thank God, he's with us for his 100th birthday and we recognize him and thank him for that. So thank you for being here tonight, Bill. So everything I mentioned is older than Bill. Bobby's close, but not there. July 13th, 1923, and if you were here for the last one, you know this, the Hollywood sign was inaugurated in California, originally called the Hollywood Land Sign. So you're older than the Hollywood sign. Disney Brothers Cartoon Studios, Walt Disney Studios today, was established on October 16th, 1923. And in the long World Series phenomenon that the Yankees are with 27 World Series, on October 15th, 1923, the New York Yankees won their first World Series in 1923.
Wow.
So Bill, thank God you're here. God bless you. And we wanna honor you tonight with this 100-year commemoration, Pride of Ulster County, to Bill Donaldson. Congratulations and best wishes on the occasion of your 100th birthday on June 10th, 2023. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Bill. So ditto to Tom's remarks. The, you know, I said the last meeting, it must be something in the water in Marlborough here because we have a lot of people that are getting close to the 100-year mark. 90s, 80s, so that's a great thing. The thing is, like he said, that we're in place before or right around the age you were born is unbelievable. Just to think of what happened in the last 25 years, 30 years in our lifetime, the changes. What you've seen in 100 years is unbelievable, right? You were probably going around with horse and buggy back in the day, but now we have cars that go much faster than we want them to go. Kids that drive them much faster than we want them to. But, you know, it's an achievement to get to 100 years and then keep on going and be able to actually come in here and receive this award. And so like I said at the last one, I wanna see if you wanna say some words. And I'm gonna bring the mic to you to tell us what you've learned in 100 years. So let me see if I can get this over to you.
Do you wanna say anything?
Ah, let me, I, I'm wordless. I was four years old when Lindbergh flew to Paris. That was 20, 27, 1927, he flew to Paris. And I've been interested in airplanes ever since, but, uh, well, what else?
World War II, World War II vet. You've done a lot in your lifetime.
We went over our particular outfit, went over on the Queen Mary, the huge ship, English. And we went, uh, went south because we got warm and then we went up north and docked up. It wasn't docked, it was out in a bay, you know. And they sent a little boat out to get us. And then we took a train ride down to Flixton. That's where our airfield was. We were there a year and a half. And that could be it.
And if you ask a vet, the memory comes right back. You always remember those types of things, right? You'll never forget them. And we're never gonna forget you, so. And I'm gonna fix your plaque and then we're gonna get you the right. We don't, I'll put Bob. I'll give that to him, alright? So, but congratulations. Come on up. If you wanna come up. Come on, everybody. Come on up.
Again, thank you, everyone, for coming. And Bill, I just wanna let you know, if you guys don't wanna come back, like on December 12th, Bob Barker's gonna be 100, so come on down and see that.
Come on down. We'll take a couple minutes for everybody to get together and then we'll get back to the meeting. Thank you, Bob. No, you, thank you. Alright. So we're gonna go back to our normally scheduled meeting. And we gotta go back to the top because this is a public hearing of local law of the year 2023, amending the zoning map for the town of Marlborough. And as I said, this is a rezoning of the property previously owned by Graziosi and purchased by Leighton Properties. And this darker yellow area is right now industrial. And then the lighter yellow is R1 and the yellow is R. What the proposal is, is to make everything R. The industrial zone where that location is does not, in the board's minds, ever gonna be developed properly for industrial use, being the location. But we do believe it's a perfect location for what this developer wants to do, which is townhomes. And so in order to do the townhome development, all this property needs to be R. And we are recommending that it does become R. And this is the time of the meeting. If anybody has any public comments, they can come up and speak. You have three minutes. If not, and I see Mark Blanchard's here, who's the attorney for Leighton Properties. So if you have any questions, he could answer them. But if we don't have any questions, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And this will be open until next meeting because we need a 30-day wait in order for this to happen. And then the next meeting, we'll actually make the vote, so. But if there's no comments, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda. So, Mark, you're done. Thank you. Alright. Alright, so motion to approve the minutes from the June 12th, 2023 town board meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the June 12th town board meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move authorize payment of bills of $712,489.
I'll make the motion to pay the bills in the amount of $712,489.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, my supervisor updates, so I pushed off last meeting, so I'm gonna just tell you a few things we were doing this last month. Uh, so my report this month, had multiple meetings with the town engineer Phil Bell, discussed the bond documents with Arch Insurance Company on the WND general construction for the new community center project. Also had multiple conversations with Katie McFadden, the senior claims examiner from Arch Insurance Company, to discuss the processes, how the surety company will handle completing the project. Uh, had conference calls, a meeting with Sean Grimm and Herb Blitz from GPI Engineering to go over the highway water department building renovation project that the board is possibly looking at doing next year. Had a meeting with Pat and Mary Ann Quick to discuss the Old Indian Trail road closure. Had multiple conversations with Muguie Hauser and Engineering, Mike Lomarex, and Jamie Zaccara to discuss Old Indian Trail options on the repairs of the road. Had multiple meetings with town attorney Jerry Camados to discuss the Old Indian Trail closure. Had multiple meetings with highway department on Old Indian Trail closure. Met with Central Hutch and Corey Chambers and the highway superintendent John Alangi and deputy superintendent Lazaroff on Old Indian Trail to discuss the leaning utility poles and installing lighting along the road. Attended the Marlborough School Ceremony for being named Essentials Element School to Watch by New York State. And Councilwoman Sessa was also there. I, if we have time later, I could put up a video of it, but it's a five-minute video, but it is kind of a, an important thing for our school and our town.
It was very impressive.
It was very impressive that they won this and it, I think it'd be cool for everybody to see if they wanna watch it, so, but we'll see what time we got left. Attended the monthly Ulster County Supervisor, the mayor's meeting at the Roundout Municipal Center in Marlborough Town Hall. Met the transfer station with the DEC representatives and the town employees to go over the cap repairs that are needed in order for Next Amp Solar to be built up on the transfer station. Attended the quarterly Marlborough School District Safety Meeting with Chief Kukosa and our SRO officers. And if people don't know, our school district takes safety extremely serious. Uh, and they have these quarterly meetings with the police, myself, all their staff. And they go over every possible scenario that could happen in the school, so just to give them a shout out, they do a great job. Uh, met with the kayak committee, Deputy Supervisor Appeler, Rosemary and Jerry Wine, Superintendent Alangi, Gary Lazaroff, and Board Safe Representative Tom Warcall to finalize the adaptive kayak launch location at the Milton Landing. Uh, met with John DiMarco, Councilwoman Sessa, and Code Enforcement Officer Tom Corcoran with developers interested in the Guarino property to build a resort conference center off of Latent Town Road extending down to Ridge Road. That's, uh, seems to be a very possible thing that's gonna happen, another exciting development in our town. Had a meeting with the PBA Union Negotiating Committee and Attorney Anthony Safaro with Councilman Malinelli and Chief Kukosa to discuss union contracts. And just to give the board an update, everything seems to be going pretty well. We might actually wrap this up before the year end, which would be a first time in about 50 years, so, that we get it done in a year. Uh, had a meeting with Milton Landing Committee with Deputy Supervisor Appeler, John Behan, Rosemary and Jerry Wine, Jason Pittiger to discuss putting out the bid, the Milton Landing Park updates that will be paid for by New York State LWRP grant that the town received. We're still having issues with CSX on the maintenance agreement for the new crossing. And we agreed to utilize the current crossing in our development plans. Had a meeting with the Bayside Developers, Dan Rieger and Code Enforcement Officer Tom Corcoran to discuss parking layout and school shared parking needs. Had a meeting with Ron Cypress and Mark Blanchard from Leighton Properties with Code Enforcement Officer Tom Corcoran to discuss various codes in preparation of Leighton Properties putting in an application with the planning board. And attended last night the Milton Hose Company Number One Annual Cocktail Party and Fundraiser at Better Milk Falls, which is another great time. So they did a great job and the weather held out, which was great. So that was my report for this month. Okay, so presentations we have done, comments on the agenda. Anybody have any comments on the agenda to? We get to new business. Alright. I'm gonna ask the board for new business, as we mentioned at the last, maybe not the last meeting, the one before, that I've been working with the school district on the extension of our intermusical agreement for this building. Uh, remind the public, this was a 10-year lease with a 10-year option. And we're in our 10-year option after this year. So this is on the website, if anybody wants to read it, but it's pretty much the exact, it is the exact same contract that we had previously. So the only change is that we're extending it, but there's really no changes to the contract, which means we have this building for 10 more years unless something happens and the school district needs to have it back. In that case, we have 30 months to vacate. In exchange, we pay our fair share of utilities here and we pay for the crossing guard that you see in town and we pay for one SRO officer. So that's, if you wanna call it our rent, that's our rent, but. And then basically that extends for 10 more years in that, that way. And after the next 10 years, it would have to go out to vote during a school-public vote to extend it any further. And that's by state law and school-state aid law. So if the board has any questions further than that, I just need a motion to sign the agreement and give it back to the school to give to their board.
I'll make the motion to sign the agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay. Man, I don't think we paid the air conditioning bill or something because it's hot in here. Yeah. Me. Well, if everybody doesn't know, the whole building is controlled by a computer system at the high school. That's how the whole school district is run, so. Like sometimes if we even have power here and they don't, we're in trouble, so. Okay, so we did the pride, we did the new business. Workshop topic is open board discussion, so what I am gonna do in this section is the... Well, I don't have any new discussions. Do you guys? No, so correspondence, I don't have any, so we're gonna go right to our public comment. And I know Pat and Mary Ann are here to speak about Old Indian Trail, so if you wanna come up, come on up. And we got your letter. Everybody got your letter. Everybody read your letter, so they should be update on what you wrote.
Okay. I just have a few pages, it won't take me about five minutes.
Sure.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Mary Ann Quick. And my husband Pat is the gentleman with the striped shirt on. We happen to be the unlucky persons whose home on Old Indian Trail in Milton, where the road collapsed. I'll try not to repeat what I wrote in my letter to Scott and John Alangi and the board members. However, there is more to be said and I appreciate the opportunity to say it. Sad to say, Old Indian Trail has never been maintained properly. It's been like a forgotten road. Actually, because of its location running parallel to the Hudson River, you'd think it would be a priority for the town and the highway department because of the beauty that surrounds it on the east. We've lived on Old Indian Trail in our present home for 18 years. And before building this home, we lived 20 years in another lovely A-frame that I built just a quarter mile south on Old Indian Trail. So we've lived on this road for 38 years. And we have traveled this road that has been so poorly maintained for so long. When Pat and I came before the town board many years ago when we were planning to build the house, Mr. Appeler at the time, who was the highway superintendent, called Old Indian Trail a goat path. My response to him was, you can call it a goat path, you can call it an interstate highway. But you have a duty by law to maintain it and make it safe for us as residents of this town and the state of New York. Years ago, I was forced to send a certified letter to former highway superintendent Appeler about the potholes and the dangerous conditions on Old Indian Trail. Our home is beautiful and it's beautifully maintained. When we decided to build it overlooking the river, we incurred large expenses because we built it correctly with architects and engineers involved. We didn't cut corners to build this house. But the town of Marlboro has cut corners in its maintenance of the road upon which this house sits. I recently read in the Southern Ulster Times about all the accomplishments of Supervisor Cochran since he has been the town supervisor and how this board worked so well together to get things done. Therefore, Pat and I expect you to do the right thing and fix the collapsed portion of Old Indian Trail. We ask you to work together on this. The collapse of this road must be considered an emergency situation. Therefore, please suspend your normal bidding process and get the ball rolling ASAP to repair Old Indian Trail. Our health, our welfare, and our safety are being jeopardized every day. Our plan was to sell our home. I explained it in our letter to the board, which you already have in your possession. It's been our plan for two years. So any naysayer who comes along and says, oh, you want the road fixed, oh, all of a sudden you're selling your house. That's not true. It's been in the works for two years and I explained it in the letter. As it exists now, our house is not worth anything. The town of Marlboro has essentially stolen our home from us. It is the town's statutory responsibility to maintain and fix the road. We want to put our home on the market and move on with our plans. You have a duty to us and you are in breach of that duty. I want to mention in closing that for 10 years of his life, while holding down a full-time job, Pat volunteered his services as the, as the project manager for the restoration and rehabilitation of the 1883 Milton train station. That is at the end of Old Indian Trail. Without his expertise, hard work, and dedication to this town, you wouldn't have this showpiece on the Hudson. I too, working full-time at the, at the time, held several fundraisers to make money for the train station. Doesn't any of this dedication to our town mean anything to anybody? We have supported every fundraiser from the fire department, police department, library. We're civic-minded people and we're not asking for anything more than what we are entitled to. So as board members, why don't you park your cars at the train station and walk up Old Indian Trail so you can witness the horrible conditions that exist and what I'm talking about? I want to thank you for your time and especially thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
So this is the picture of the slide of the hill. And that's the picture from the top.
Do you have a picture of our driveway?
Uh, I don't know if I have that in this thing here, Mary Ann. I don't think I have it here. It's on my main computer. It's not on this computer. But.
Our driveway is.
The driveway is right there. It's right on the other side of, it's over. It's over here, right in this section here. Well, it's a little further back than that, but it's right around here.
Because we don't want to go on the dirt because it's loose and God knows what it looks like now since it's green.
Yeah, it's, it's this loose shale under here. And there's loose shale up here that cause issues, right? There's really no hard, straight shale here or rock bed or bluestone that you could get into. So look, you know, we're, look, I know you're frustrated. I, I talked to you often already, right? I know your frustrations, I, you know, I, we are taking this seriously. We are talking to our engineers, we're options. Like I said, we're having a meeting there tomorrow with our engineers to see if we can do alternative plans. So, you know. All the board members have parked their car at the train station and have walked up there. So I do take a little offense to that, that you're saying that we didn't. Well, why would I want to drive into your driveway? I'm not. I don't want to go there, Pat. I'm just saying, everybody's been up there, everybody's seen it. Okay, but we've been up there and seen what's happened. So we are taking this seriously. We are looking into fixing it as best we can. And we're going to have a good meeting hopefully tomorrow with our engineers. And we're going to see what they tell us, right? You know, they've been telling me a lot of things over the last two months. But until I could, I want to have them come there and tell me directly if we could do some alternatives that we've been talking about. So. But that's.
Assuming that the alternative can be accomplished, I'm going to assume that, that the town, that road will still be maintained by the town of Marlboro.
Um, well. Again, these are all legal things, so I'm not going to say anything as far, I would assume so, but I'm not going to say yea, nay. I can't, look, we're going to try to fix it as best of our ability, right? And like we've talked in the past, there's other options too. We can, we can close the road at that option, at that section. You know, but, you know, personally, I'd rather have it flow through traffic. But, you know, we'll have to see what our engineers come back with here and tell us. So there's a couple of different options that we can go with, but I want to get the best one and see what we can work with. That's what I'm trying to accomplish. I don't want to just go in there free-willy, do something, and then it makes it, looks good for like the first month and then two months later it collapses again, right? We want to make sure that if we're going to do this, we're going to do it right. I, you know, and I told, you know, I was honest with you right off the front. I said, this is not going to be weeks, it's going to be months, it could be a long time, right? So unfortunately, that's the way government works just because of the bureaucracy and the legal parts of it and the engineers. So, but don't take it that we're not taking this seriously. We're all taking this seriously.
And I appreciate that. I appreciate your time and your meetings, but you also, you do understand.
I understand. If I was sitting in your shoes, I'd be this, I'd be asking the same questions, doing the same thing. So I don't, look, that's what I told you, you can come here and I'll keep speaking with you and I'll keep meeting with you. And, and hopefully I'll get you a final answer because soon as I know it, you'll know it.
I, I have a question, Scott.
Sure.
When, when did the Marlboro, Town of Marlboro, take this Old Indian Trail as, when, when do we take the right of usage for this? When was this? Was it? My question is, when did the Town of Marlboro take this right of usage and incorporate it in, in our maintenance, Scott, repairs?
They've been maintaining it since I lived up the road 18, 38 years ago.
I have that.
I mean, when you, I, I understand that this is a right of usage that the town has. Is there any kind of agreement that came with this right of usage?
Not a lot of any agreements, no. It's a town road. Our home was approved to be built there and they maintain it, they, they plow it, they cut the weeds. And that's about what they do. They have blacktop portions of it. So it is a town road and it's their statutory duty to maintain it.
So it was in 2005 is where Mr. Appeler signed this agreement, right?
Is there any, is there any terms to this? I mean, it's tagged.
It's right here.
It's tagged.
And references in this document on 28, 2005, Old Indian Trail is a town road by use. That's what it's for. So that's the definition of what it is. It's actually was on the map that way, road by use. And that was done in 2005 by Mr. Appeler and the town. So look, this is all like again with the engineers, the attorneys and everybody, just so everybody knows, like the town doesn't own the property to the west side, to the east side, right? We have the right of use of the road, right? But we don't own the properties on either side of the road. So that's another twist in the whole thing. There's property owners, there's CSX property owners, there's residential owners, right? So it's, it's not just a simple, the town come in here and fix everything, right? Technically, we don't own, we don't own the side of that hill, right? So.
No, we do.
Exactly. Yeah, so, and then CSX owns the remaining, right? So it's, it's, it's not as easy as you think.
So to get the timetable correct here, so exactly when you built that house 18 years ago is when this agreement went into place. Is that what I'm hearing? It's 2005, you said?
2005.
So, so, and you say you've been there for eight, you built it 18 years ago?
Our other home was about a quarter of a mile south.
But I'm just particular.
And so that was already a town road, but 2005 when we built, yeah, deemed a town road.
See how it says right on the map here, Town Road by Use. And this is the road. But then the properties on either side of the road are owned by others. Which that whole landslide is owned by others, right?
No, it's a town road.
The road, the road, the road. The property on either side of the road, right, is not the town's. That's, that's where this whole thing becomes the gray area. It's a right by use through, it's like, almost like an easement through a property, right? That's what a right by use is. It's like you have properties on either side. The town has a town road going through. It's kind of like an easement agreement that you would have with the property owner, right? It's the same thing. So that's the problem. I don't want to say it's a problem, but that's the thing where our legal side comes in and says, well, we have to make sure because we don't own the properties along those sides of the roads, right? So that's what's, that's what's really taken the longest part of all this is how to figure that stuff out. So.
And I have one more question, Mary Ann, just to you, because I'm curious when you said that, that the town cut corners for the maintenance of, of this road, what, can you give me an example what that means? Sure.
Have you been there?
No, I haven't. And I wanted to go there today and I didn't with the rain, but I will be there tomorrow.
Let me tell you, if you walk out from the train station, keep walking, keep walking south, you're going to see what I mean. Part of it is blacktop, part of it is not. Part of it is erosion. There's ditches, there, there's holes, there's holes in the middle of the road. Go ahead, go.
Well, I just, I just did not know what cutting corners mean, what you were defining that, and I just had a curiosity, just.
You can't understand it unless you come down. And if you want to come south where it says road closed, et cetera, which we practically had to go through the act of Congress to get those signs changed, because people were coming south on the trail, coming as far as the barricades and then attempting to make a U-turn to come back down south because you can't go any farther than what because they had a department with barricades there with cones, okay? So now they're trying to make a U-turn at the barricade. They're trying to come into our driveway making a U-turn. They did not pay attention to the signs that existed. So Pat and I, we had to do quite a bit before we got the signs changed. The signs, now the signs say, road closed, dead end, no outlet, that sort of stuff.
That's in the letter that.
That's in the letter.
He said to you guys, you should have that.
Well, I don't know if you had that particular, but if that's what happened. So now finally, finally they changed the signs, okay? So we're not getting as much traffic. However, we did have a car yesterday, Scott, had a car that came north through all of the signs, road closed, no outlet, blah, blah. Came right through, came right up to our driveway, people from out of county looking for church. And it said your GPS told them to come that way.
Yeah.
So Pat had to.
Like I said in a previous meetings here, I've said to you, I could put 100 signs up. Certain people are still going to do, and I'm going to say it again, stupid things, right? You could put 100 signs up, I could put a flashing light, I could put a green light that says go and a red light that says stop. And you will still have people do what they want to do because their GPS tells them to drive a car over a cliff, they might do that. So, you know, I can't, I can't stop that from, I can't, I can't stop that. It's probably still going to continue unfortunately. Right? Yeah, so I mean, we're, we have as many signs as we can put up. We have the horse barriers, we have the block barriers. I mean, it's just a matter of, people just sometimes just don't listen to things, but.
I know. Scott, I also, there are people who walk that area and I, this gentleman walks every single day.
Yeah. Well, it is called Old Indian Trail, right? So.
Yes, and I just keep saying, maybe you should put something up with that.
Don't say anything. We're going to finish this up.
You definitely walk in doors.
Okay, all right. So if anybody else have any other public comments? Go ahead, Mark.
I just had a follow-up question about when, earlier, previously at a board meeting, you talked about having difficulty reaching the engineer who hadn't come. Uh, when, is it tomorrow, is that the first time he will see this place?
No.
Or he saw it before?
He's been there. I just have him come back because we have some questions.
So he will have that report ready that you spoke about?
The report? I have the, I have a geological report estimate, not report, just the cost of it.
What is?
There's no report done yet.
What's the estimate?
I gotta get estimates.
Give or take. Oh, you haven't gotten the estimates yet?
I got, I got a estimate, $27,500.
And that would be the cutting of the road?
That's, no, that's geotechnical.
Did you ask if that was the construction of the road?
No, no, the cutting into the bank.
That's just geotechnical testing of doing a survey, drilling holes, taking samples of the property. I, I don't, I know, I, you know, I like, I talked to Mary Ann in, in, God, man, am I losing my mind, Pat, right now? But anyway, yeah, Mary Ann and Pat, I need to get at least one more estimate to see. Look, I don't know if $27,500 is the right number. I gotta be, gotta also be responsible to the taxpayer as a whole. Not just an individual, you're a taxpayer, but as a whole, I gotta make sure that's a like right number. And is that something we technically have to do? That's another question I have for my engineers tomorrow. Mary Ann, okay, I got, I got another person up here. Okay, 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 Mary Ann, you had your time. I, I let you speak, let, let us speak here, all right? $27,500, I'm trying to get another estimate. They say they're getting another one. But in the meantime, we have questions for them. And I think the best way to get questions answered is not by emails, not by phone calls all the time. It's by having them come out here and talking to us face to face. time, it's by having them come out here and talking to us face-to-face. I'm more of a face-to-face type of person, so that's what they're doing tomorrow, 'cause we think we have some options, and I wanna make sure are those options even viable before we go down the road.
Right, right.
And then, from that point, is the geotechnical data needed or not? 'Cause I'd rather take twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars and put it into the road rather than digging holes, okay? So... But if it's needed, then we gotta figure out what we gotta do.
I think that does reasonable.
Well, you might think that, Pat, I don't, okay? And I have to be responsible to eight thousand, eight hundred taxpayers in this town, and I will be getting another estimate, and that's what I'll be doing, if I have to do it. So, that's where we're at, all right? Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Anybody else have any public comments? I can't see you, Doc, there. Oh, there, Mary. Jerry's head was blocking you.
I feel a little... I'm sorry about your problem, but I do have something... Two things that I would like to bring up, and that is, so, on or about the last meeting of our town board, uh... In which the gay pride resolution was passed, a sign essentially descri... Declaring that all lives matter was removed from my property. And my neighbor's gay pride flag and the same sign was also removed from her property as well. The signs and the flag really are not a matter of consequence. But the removal of those flags connotes and denotes a level of intolerance and disrespect within this community. And I feel that the failure to speak out becomes an action of acquiescence, and so I'm here to report that that happened, uh... That it's not right, and, um... And then I wanted to bring it to your attention, and also to commend the board once again for your courage, uh... To recognize gay pride. And I did drive by the town hall that night to see if your flag was stolen.
No.
But it was not, and I think that's because it was next to...
Well, you know what's... It's... That's the reason why we have it where we have it, 'cause, look, when we were talking about alternative spots to put it than where we put it last year, some people were, you know, suggesting the park, or here, or there, and, you know, me and the chief talked quite a bit about this, and I was like, "Look, just same thing with the road," right? People will be people. If I put that flag somewhere else, other than on the... Right next to a police station, on a town building, I guarantee you, it wouldn't still be up, right? So, the reason why it is right where it is...
It is hot.
Is so it doesn't get vandalized, right? Because, well, people still could be people, but I would think they'd be very brazen to come to here and take something off a town building with police department and cameras all over them, so, um... Just so you know, that's one of the reasons why it is where it is, so...
Well, I did check.
But yes.
So, I also have another statement that's on a different matter, and, um... I would like to set the record clear about a statement that appeared in the most recent edition of the Southern Ulster Times, in which it purported that the Marlboro Democratic Party chose to hold a caucus, uh... This is quote, "But had meetings behind closed doors where they decide who to put up and then get sixty signatures from family and friends," end of quote. As you all know, I think you would know, I am the Democratic candidate for the Marlboro Town Board. I have attended, in the past number of years, I have attended more town board meetings than probably any member of this community. As I sat through these meetings, I thought to myself, "I could do this." And as time went on, I thought, "I wanna do this." So, to get on the ballot, and so I saw it. I saw it and received the Democratic nomination. To get on the ballot in November, our party chooses to utilize the petition process. Both the caucus and the petition processes are legitimate. There is nothing wrong, right, or better with either one, it is simply a matter of And certainly, we do obtain signatures of family and friends, just as the nominations for the Republican slate were made by family and friends. I mean, honestly, if you don't have your family and friends supporting you, you know, come on. So... But we all know that there's a threshold for the number of signatures required to be placed on the ballot. And I want you to know publicly that we solicited more than a hundred, one hundred and fifty signatures from registered voters by going door to door. It is on the porches and yards of these voters that you hear of their troubles, their issues, and their concerns, and you actually see the challenges that confront them. And for me, and many have asked, "Why do you petition?" For me, that is where the true value of petitioning, the petitioning process lies, is talking to people in their own environment. So, I just wanna set the record straight, and I thank you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate it. Anybody else with public comment? Come on up, come on up.
Good evening, my name's Bridgette Supernova, thank you for your time. Um... I actually came here just to express my gratitude to the highway department, to the town. Um... I had a sort of similar issue in my home where, uh... Farmer's irrigation system broke and...
Can you speak up, just leave your mind?
Okay, sorry. Bridgette Supernova, um... I came here to thank the highway department, the town board, and the town, and everybody else who helped. I had a similar situation where an irrigation ditch broke underneath the road, and it took about six months of work in cooperation with myself, with the neighbor who owns the orchard, the town highway department. Took about six months. Um... I had two feet of water in my yard, but we did get it fixed, and I really just wanted to say thank you for that.
No, you're welcome. Thanks, John and the crew, they, uh... It took a while, like you said, to get it all straightened out, but like I tell the Quicks, it does get fixed, right? Doesn't take overnight, but we will fix things.
Yeah, luckily, this was a seemingly small issue, although it did affect my water and other things, but it took about six months. I'm very appreciative, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay. We do still have a public hearing open, just so everybody knows, for the zone change, and we're gonna continue that till next meeting. Um... If anybody has any written comments they wanna give for that zone change, they can do so through the town offices and submit to the town clerk, um... Which will get it to the town board. And we don't have any resolutions tonight, and I don't have anybody retiring from the chief's office tonight, so that's a first in a long time. And since Eddie's not here, Manny, I'm gonna give you the honors for item number fourteen.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.